Now, please stand with us. We are the saying of the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, roll call. We've got all five board members present along with Superintendent Brett Boggs, Assistant Superintendent Blaine Conley, and Justin McFarland as treasurer. Um, upcoming board meetings, August fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, regular meeting, Mentone Elementary at seven P.M. August twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, budget workshop at the administration office, seven P.M. September eleventh, two thou- two thousand seventeen, regular meeting, Mentone Elementary, seven P.M. And October ninth, two thousand seventeen, regular meeting, Mentone Elementary at seven P.M. We're on to Spotlight on the Valley.
Okay, the only thing that we have tonight, Todd, would be, we'd like to welcome and introduce our new employees. Uh, in just a little bit, I will ask you to approve Andrew Murphy as a fifth grade teacher at Akron Elementary School this year. So Andrew, we'd like to welcome you to the meeting tonight. Welcome to Tiffany Valley, although, uh, you worked for us last year, I think, most of the second semester, but, uh, maybe you want to just tell these fellows a little bit about yourself and, uh, just give us some background?
Well, I'm Andrew Murphy. I'm a Valley grad, February two thousand eight. I graduated from IPF elementary in December. With my bachelor's degree in education, I got my teaching license in January. I worked at Akron Elementary second semester last year in the special ed department. I did a maternity leave for fourth and fifth grade, uh, till the last half of last year, and I enjoyed it, and I'm glad to be coming back.
So officially welcome, Andrew. Glad, we're glad you're here and, uh, look forward to working with you this year.
I definitely am.
Okay. Uh, we do have one new staff member we'll introduce here a little bit later, so I think that's everybody for now.
That's all. We'll go on to see, uh, items from the visitors. Does anyone have any items? There're not too many visitors, so we're sitting good tonight. Okay, we'll move on to approval of consent agenda. Uh, number one, approve minutes of June eighth, two thousand seventeen, executive session. Number two, approve the minutes of the June twelfth, two thousand seventeen, regular meeting. Number three, approve the minutes of the June twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, CPF workshop and executive session. Number four, approve the hiring of the following personnel: Dusty Sweet, special education teacher at the middle school; Andrew Murth- Murphy, fifth grade teacher, Akron Elementary; Sarah Hoff, third grade teacher, Akron Elementary; and Jennifer McQuinn, instructional assistant at the middle school. Number five, approve the following extracurricular assignments: Tiffany Karatki, girls' golf coach for the high school. Number six, accept the resignation of the following personnel: Beverly Perry, instructional assistant at the middle school. Number seven, approve the termination of employment of the following personnel: Samantha Shepherd, custodian at the high school. Number eight, approve facility use contract with Beaver Dam Preschool. Number nine, approve the real estate lease with Kosciowski County Head Start and Cardinal Services. And number ten, approve the appointment of Emily...
Shoutin?
Shoutin, uh, to the Fulton County Public Library Board. Is there anything, fellows, you want to pull out and discuss, or do I have a motion to accept?
Make that motion to approve, set it in as read by you.
Brian makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Todd.
Stan has a second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Maze, it's passed. Uh, approval of claims and payroll.
Okay, thank you, Todd. We have one pre-written claim listing, uh, this evening. It's dated June twentieth of twenty seventeen. It's in the amount of three million, two hundred sixteen thousand, nine hundred fifty-five dollars and thirty cents. Our regular claim listing, uh, is dated July tenth, twenty seventeen, in the amount of one hundred eighteen thousand, two hundred sixty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. Uh, we have two payrolls this evening. The first is dated June ninth of twenty seventeen, in the amount of five hundred seven thousand, nine hundred seventeen dollars and eleven cents. The second is dated June twenty-three, twenty seventeen, in the amount of four hundred forty-four thousand, five hundred fifty dollars and sixty-four cents. I submit these claims and payroll for your approval.
Do is, do we have any questions about claims and payroll? Do I have a motion to accept the claims and payroll as they've been read?
I'll make that motion.
Aaron's makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Todd.
Adam seconds. Uh, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Maze, aye as ever. On to the financial report.
Okay, you have the reconciled bank statement and the monthly financial, uh, report of funds for June twenty seventeen. Our receipts, our dispersments are, uh, total receipts for all funds, six million, twelve thousand, twenty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. Total dispersments for all funds, four million, four hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred sixty-six dollars and eighty-one cents.
Okay, thank you. On to old business.
Yeah, the only old business we have is an update on the Akron Elementary School project, and our project manager, Brandon Wolf, is here tonight, so, Brandon, what's going on at Akron?
Yeah, lots going on at Akron. So, um, had furniture delivery last week, um, that went, I guess, a little better or worse as planned. We were only supposed to get part delivery. We actually got...
Almost everything.
Almost everything for the entire school, so all the furniture's there. Bad thing is, all the furniture's there. So, um, you know, the D wing, classroom wing is in really good shape, you know, ceilings are in, technology's in, smart boards, marker board's going up, doors and hardware, carpet's all done, ceiling's done. Um, office area is the area that's been lacking, um, trying to get that a big push, to get that out of, out of the space that it's in right now. It, we're, we'll be doing flooring the end of this week in there. Ceilings, the grids hung, so we're waiting to drop some pads, start lighting in there. Um, had really good news today. We had an inspection on the cooler freezer today, and it passed, so we're able to get the food out of the storage truck, moved in there tomorrow, so, um, Friday was a little hectic because of all the rain we had. We had a couple parts that were missing that the electrical contractor did what they needed to and got there, and they were, they were on the roof a couple times during downpour, actually getting stuff installed so we could make sure it was turned on in time, cooled over the weekend, so them and the refrigeration guys went above and beyond what they needed to do just to make sure it was all in. So, um, paving, we're supposed to start paving parking lots starting next week. Um, plan is to pave and surface the playground. Um, east side's gonna be paved, basically about two-thirds of the east side will be on a binder. We're just gonna leave it as binder, basically the base coat, so that way we can get bus traffic away from student drop-off, teacher parking from the west side. Um, west side parking's gonna be a little bit of an issue because of the utility companies and not wanting to work with us to get some poles removed, so we actually have a meeting on Wednesday to discuss this with Duke and Frontier, so I've been a month and a half trying to get a pole removed, and I can't get anybody to remove a pole, which is right in the new entrance of the driveway. So, we're planning, we're getting that parking lot all ready, so when they pave, they can start paving. It's basically gonna be dressing up the entrance, uh, to the parking lot, so, um, demo in the existing wing that stands, going really well, which we keep two-thirds of that even when school comes back. Um, new mechanical systems are going in now. Um, the portion that's gonna be used by the school when they come back, um, has all brand-new windows in it, all windows are done throughout the building, so they'll be, have to work with a little bit of not having some carpet, you know, there's gonna be some window sill that's not in, but it's gonna help speed up the process in the last part of the project to go ahead and get in there and just do the finishes, basically. Not have to worry about doing windows in the middle of fall, winter, taking turns, so, um, kitchen equipment's all set. They're plumbing that, building electrical of that, that's a wear wash right there, so, um, wash stations all, all the stainless pieces are in, and they've been plumbing those as we speak, so... The, uh, new piece of the reception desk, which is in that area, it actually came in today. We weren't expecting it to next week, but it's in. It's a piece of pipe lumber donated, a lot of the wood that goes on, so really neat piece that's going in right today. So their, the Akron sign, the old from nineteen twelve, they're in its place, displayed now in the display cases, so, um, they look really old, which they're supposed to, but...
That's the piece that, uh, was the old piece right above the main entrance there.
I don't know if they put the, there's a picture of the nineteen twelve that looks really neat in the display case, but...
Right next to this one, isn't it?
Yeah. We, we actually had it fastened on some steel plate, so it's, 'cause it's a diamond that was in the ground, so the way it's, it's almost looks like it's suspended in the air in there, so it's a really neat piece in there. Um, it's gonna be a push getting started on our southern part of the gym addition and getting that under roof and so we can dry up the cafeteria, 'cause with all this rain, without having to roof or anything, 'cause we had to wait on demo in the buildings, it's, Friday was bad. We got, we had about two inches of water that tried to run back into the building, so...
How are we gonna do that, Brandon, there at that entrance? Are we gonna seal that all up, or...
Yeah, we, I'm working with Derek to figure out how to get him temporary then, so it'll dry up. I mean, it's all sheet vinyl flooring in there, and there's three or four different patterns all throughout, so, I mean, it's time-consuming, and you can't be getting water running in there, the latest floor, so it's, there's a lot of challenging pieces still left to do, but it's a push, everybody's pushing, so...
We have, have, uh, onsite registration on the twenty-fifth and the twenty-seventh at each of our schools, and just to help out a little bit, um, we decided to go ahead and do that at the Akron Public Library, third Akron. So we'll set up computers in the basement downstairs there. Now, we don't get a lot of people that come in for that. Most people do registration online, but we do get a few that come in and use our computers to do it, so we thought that would probably be better to do it at that location, give these guys a little bit more time, get things done, and start a school.
Who's doing the paving?
Finn and Brown.
Finn and Brown does that? Then are we putting anything, are we putting anything in there for pipe donating this wood, uh, any, anything showing that they've...
We have any...
Any signage that...
Well, there's plaques, yeah, there's plaques in that that we put in. Um, I don't know that we have any that has pipe lumber on it, but I mean, that's something we can talk about.
Well, it's something we can come back and do later. Yeah, yeah, just something that, uh, 'cause I know they've done the, what, the stage deal, right around the stage, around the scoreboard, the gymnasium, um...
There's gonna be a feature right inside the reception area lobby area that they do. I mean, it's, and it's a big piece. It's twelve feet long by four feet high that...
Just be nice to recognize them somewhere.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. Good deal. Still think we can be ready for school, but...
We will be ready.
We'll be ready. Yeah.
Don't have a choice.
Yeah.
You don't have any old buildings left.
Yeah.
So are they gonna get, um, I know at the end of the week last week, the basement was still there from the gym, and that's all gonna be gone?
It's all out.
It's all gone?
Tomorrow, tomorrow they're gonna be backfilling all that basement, so...
So all the concrete from the previous building, that's all?
Yeah, they've got a little bit to haul out tomorrow, but, I mean, it's, it's all basically the dirt right now.
Have you ran into any unsuitable soils in any of those areas?
Yeah, most of them.
How far down, how far down do you have to go?
Um, until we, when we pulled out the foundations, there was good fill, but it was under, underneath the good fill was black monkey dirt. Um, right now, it's probably three or four feet down over most of that. GME, the testing agency, is gonna be on site tomorrow, 'cause we're starting to dig out as long as it doesn't pour rain while it does. Um, gonna start undertoting for the rest of the addition, basically come out, and so when we get, we, we go ten feet past when we do that, so we'll be able to see once we're past there, how that's going, 'cause we'll be underneath where most of the old building was setting, so we'll have a better idea tomorrow, um, what it's like from there.
Lot going on. Yeah. Thank you, Brandon. We appreciate it.
You have a question?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the registration date and time.
The twenty-fifth and the twenty-seventh of July, from twelve to eight. That's in all of our schools.
Twelve, yeah.
Yeah, now, we do online registration, and that's available right now, but we do still have some people that either don't have access at home, wanting to use our technology.
Thank you.
And Akron will be at, uh, the public library as where that'll be for the Akron folks.
And what, what would be the first day that students can get into the building, the new one?
Well, the first student day of school is, uh, seventh of August.
August, yeah. Thank you.
That's all. That's all that we're gonna be doing. Okay, on to new, oh, no. Yeah, it is, that's awesome. On to new business. Approve matching grant from DECO Foundation.
Yeah, we, uh, were informed not too long ago that the DECO Foundation's board chose to invest in a project known as Above and Beyond Learning Environments, expanding how school libraries meet student needs. Um, the grant was written by our media specialist Andrea Michael, and it's written to expand the services of the libraries, the middle school, and the high school. Uh, the DECO Foundation has pledged up to twenty thousand dollars if matched by the school corporation's funds, donations from the community, or other grant funds. Uh, if funds are secured toward the library expansion project, uh, some of the funding's already accounted for. Mrs. Michael will be working with Mr. Levy and others to raise the remainder of the funding in order to take advantage of this matching grant opportunity, so I know they're working on that, uh, working on that right now. But we want to thank the DECO Foundation for that.
For sure.
So we'll ask you to approve that.
Do I have a motion to set the DECO Foundation grant?
I'll make that motion to accept the DECO...
Brian makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Stan seconds it. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Yes, thank you, DECO Foundation, that's awesome. On to number two, initial consideration of addition and revision to school board policy number one.
Yes, as you know, the legislature was busy this past session and passed a number of new, new laws that impact education in Indiana, so the School Boards Association has provided us with some guidance as to policy, new policies that need to be added or policies that need to be revised, so what I'd like to do this evening is go through those with you and, uh, bring them to you for your initial consideration tonight, and then bring them back to you next month for, for your approval. The first one that we'll look at is in, uh, it's in relation to the teacher appreciation grants, uh, and it's actually, uh, will be in addition to school board policy. This is as recommended by the School Boards Association, and, uh, this policy is made necessary by the legislation that took place, uh, in two thousand seventeen in the General Assembly. Now, the teacher appreciation grants, um, are actually the same thing as the teacher performance grants that, uh, we dealt with last year, and, uh, the requirements are the same with two exceptions. First of all, the school corporation is required to give a different amount to its highly effective teachers and effective teachers, so we have to differentiate between the two. The legislation says that it must be at least twenty-five percent more given to the highly effective teachers than to the effective teachers. Now, in the past, the board, the local board here has cho- chosen to use a thirty percent difference, so that was why I included it in our policy. Um, also, the school board must annually adopt a policy on the amount of this differentiation in side pins between the two, so that's something that we have to go back to look at each year. Um, so what I have done is I have provided you with, uh, teacher appreciation grant policy, again, as recommended by, uh, the School Boards Association with the thirty percent amount in there, and so you have that, uh, there to see. Any, any questions about that one? We usually don't see those monies until, what, February, March?
December, yes.
Okay, so it's usually second semester before we see those. Uh, another change in the law is gonna result in some significant revisions for our criminal history check policy, and the new legislation has expanded the law on criminal history checks and expanded, uh, what they call expanded child protection index checks. You will find the new board policy or the revised board policy, and what I have done is I have taken our current language, current policy, there we go, and anything that is in red print is new. Anything that has a line through it is a deletion from the previous policy, but you can see it. Uh, in addition to the expanded criminal history check, now there is an expanded child protection index check that's also required, um, of our new employees. Let's see here. Yeah, the second paragraph is, is a major change. They now are requiring that the expanded criminal history check be done on each employee once every five years. So the past, you had it done once, and that was it. Now, the legislation requires that be done, done once every five years, so that's something new. Let's see here. You can see it says there that, uh, the school corporation is prohibited from hiring individuals who has been convicted of an offense which requires a revocation of a license under state law unless the conviction has been reversed, vacated, or set aside on appeal. So, there are quite a few changes to that law, uh, or to that policy made necessary by the new law. If those are the, the primary changes that I would point out to you. Does anyone have any questions about those? Okay, I think that's the first one. Yeah, okay. And then you want me to move to the next one?
Yes.
Go ahead and, okay, I've just broken up into two since there were so many. One of the, uh, revisions that we're gonna have to make to policy is to our non-residents' student transfer policy, and I will take that, so... Yes. Yeah, this is our current non-resident student transfer policy. Again, you can see the new language is in red, and they've added a paragraph here about requests for a transfer made by any school employee for his or her own children, and it indicates that that will be accepted prior to any other requests for student transfer provided there is capacity in the grade level in the building as determined annually by the school board. And then they go on to talk about a verifiable random selection process, which we've never had to do that because we've not reached that, uh, we've not reached the capacity. That is a new requirement of the law. There is also a fifth statement added here under where it says the building principal and superintendent may deny a transfer based on a request based on one or more of the following criteria. They've added a fifth criteria to that, which is the student has a history of unexcused absences, and based on the location of the student's residence, attendance of the student would be a problem if enrolled in the school corporation. Occasionally, if, if you have somebody that's coming as a non-resident, they live thirty or forty miles away, um, unless those parents are real faithful, they're, they're gonna have pretty more attendance sometimes, so, uh, that allows schools to deny requests based on, just on distance. So those are the changes in that policy that are recommended. Let's see what else we have here. Another one is to our school age childcare program, and that is this one, and, uh, about the only change there is, this, this, uh, policy before was for students in grades K through, K through six, and with, uh, so many schools doing preschool now, uh, they've added preschool to it, so, number two there is, says, provide childcare for children enrolled in the school's preschool and in kindergarten through sixth grade, whereas the law used to just say kindergarten through sixth grade. So they've made that change. It refers to a latch key program, basically that's an after-school program, which we have after-school programs in both, both our elementary schools. Uh, we have one here at Mentone. The after-school program at Akron is, is provided through the, um, Church of God in their town. That would be primary change there. And then the, uh, last one is, I think, probably the biggest change, and this is, uh, a new policy on reporting child abuse and neglect, and, uh, the way it reads now, the new policy, is that any school employee who has a reason to believe that a child is a victim of child abuse or neglect shall immediately make an oral or written report to the Department of Children's Services or to local law enforcement. After the report's been made, the, the school employee shall notify the school building principal, um... Okay, now, after the reports have been made, the school employee shall notify the school building principal, a report of suspected child abuse has been made to the Department of Children's Services or local law enforcement. The, the difference there is, in the past, by law, we've been required to make that report to the building principal, and then they in turn, or turn around and make that report to the Department of Children's Services or local law enforcement. The legislation now has turned that around. The individual that suspects abuse or neglect has to make that report directly to DCS or law enforcement. Then they go to the building principal and report. We have made a report, so that they're not gonna have to. So that's something that's a, a major change that we are gonna have to make sure that all of our employees are well aware of, Brandon.
Is our resource officer, is he considered law? Uh, so, I mean, can we report it to him like right away? He does work, so that same day, basically, we can, the building principal's...
Yeah, and I would imagine, in most cases, that's probably what we would do, is make that report directly to him. He is a law enforcement person.
He is a law enforcement, qualified, but, yeah, since it says law enforcement agency, I think he would qualify, and we can report that further, quick.
Most definitely. So that is, that's it as far as the, for policies that either need to be revised or added for this year, so I'll bring those back to you here in, uh, August for your approval.
Awesome. Do you have any other...
We do.
New business?
You guys should have, uh...
Yeah, we've got a piece of exciting new business here. Approval of Chad Crank, principal at TBHS. Do I have a motion to, to, uh, accept Chad as our new principal?
I'll make that motion.
Adam makes that motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Todd.
Aaron seconds. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye as ever. We've got us a new principal.
Anything you'd like to share with the group tonight, Chad? Anything you'd like to share with the group tonight, Chad?
Just, you know, it's, it's an honor to be even considered. Really looking forward, super excited. It's nice to meet all of you. Look forward to building relationships and just becoming a member of the, of the family here, and just can't wait to get started. Thank you very, very much for the opportunity, and ready to work.
Yeah, well, welcome. Mrs. Anders and Leah, I think that Aaron probably has a press release that he'll give to you that has to be ready for you, too, so.
Well, good. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned here this evening. Thank you for coming.